Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call attendance. Charlie?
Here.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Here.
George?
Present.
Uh, Tom Burkle? Deb? Deb, I think I saw you.
I see her.
Deb Phillips? Come back to her. Uh, Peter?
Here.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Here.
Kim? No, Kim? Uh, John?
Here.
Susan? Here.
Tara?
Here.
Nancy?
Here.
Bonnie?
Here.
Nadine?
Here.
There you go. Uh, Colin? Patrick? Michael? Bill?
Here.
Marie? No, Marie. Uh, Marie had another engagement. She's gonna try and join us later. Andy is in attendee purgatory apparently. Uh, and Sarah?
Here.
Great, thank you everyone. Okay, so um, I'm looking at the attendee list. It looks like we have eight attendees, so uh, looks like our uh, Zoom link worked this evening. Um, I apologize to all those um, who couldn't attend last meeting because the Zoom link wasn't working if there were any who who tried and couldn't get in. Uh, my apologies. Uh, as a result of that glitch, that technology glitch, um, we're gonna have to re-vote the votes we took at the last meeting so that there's no technical violation of the open meeting law. Um, and so that's what we're gonna do tonight. You probably noticed that the agenda tonight looks a lot like the agenda of last week. Uh, and that's because we're effectively doing a redo here uh, of last week's meeting. Um, hoping that we can run through the agenda efficiently since we had a lot of discussion uh, at the meeting last week on lots of these items. Uh, we did skip over the subcommittee updates the last meeting, so if we have time at the end of the meeting this evening, we'll we'll get to those. Um, so I'm gonna begin by opening the meeting to public comments. I'm sorry, we need to, we need to step back and go through the minutes. So, we had voted on the April 11 minutes. There were some corrections. They've been incorporated in this draft that was recirculated. Is that right, Amanda?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, um, I'll take a motion to approve the April 11 minutes first.
So moved.
Second.
That was Nadine and the second was George?
Bill.
Uh, Bill, thank you. Okay, uh, any further discussion on those minutes? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote on those. Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
So Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, um, anyone that I missed? Okay, those are approved. All right, May 3 minutes, uh, which were circulated, I think, yesterday. Uh, motion to approve those.
So moved.
That's Don, is there a second?
Second. Bill.
Bill, thank you. Any discussion of the May 3 minutes? Okay, hearing none, let's go for a vote. Uh, Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Abstain, I haven't time to read them.
Okay. Um, Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Abstain, I didn't have time to read them.
Nadine?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Did I miss anyone? Okay, they're approved. And then the May 30 minutes were just circulated today. If folks didn't have time to read them, I'm happy to table these for the next meeting. Um, but I thought it important to get them out to you today so you could refresh your memory on last week's meeting. So, uh, unless there's an objection, we'll table the May 30 minutes until the next meeting. Okay, great. So now I'm gonna open the floor to public comments. I don't see any. So, uh, move Jake to public manager chair update.
Sure. All right, y'all can see the screen.
Yes.
Great. I'm just gonna click through some slides, um, that you saw, um, last week, um, but we do have to re-vote on a couple of motions. So we're gonna start with budget. Um, so as I mentioned last week, I wanted to provide the board with an update on uh, spending and available funds, uh, for the uh, regional school district planning board. Uh, we're working currently on $125,000 community compact grant. That's our primary funding source, uh, which I'll talk about in just a minute. Um, additionally to that, um, we are just closing the educational visioning $50,000 grant that we got through the Bar Foundation. Actually, meeting with our, um, our facilitators tomorrow. We'll be writing a final report and submitting to Bar. Uh, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to continue our partnership with Bar um, into the summer fall, but, um, we'll take it a step at a time depending on what the board decides to do in terms of voting for a merger proposal or not. In addition to that, we have remaining, uh, $7,000 approximately in town funds, which we've been hanging on to and, um, currently Burke 12 is raising, uh, uh, working to raise fund for their operation. And as you all know, Burke 12 has been a good partner contributing funds towards this effort. And then, as I mentioned last week, we have, um, we did get a uh, Senate amendment, um, uh, through Senator Mark for $250,000, uh, which did not make it through. This is a snapshot of that amendment, uh, just so you all know is Amendment 735. Um, my understanding from Senator Mark was that this was filed with an understanding it probably wouldn't make it through um, this round, but would potentially make it through or be, um, uh, possible, uh, would receive possible funding and a supplemental budget if a supplemental budget were to occur, um, this fall, which could potentially align nicely with, um, a possible town vote. So assuming that, um, a merger vote made it through the board and then ultimately through the towns, um, I remain optimistic that, um, this funding stream um, is a possibility, um, to continue funding this work forward. Um, Amendment 745, as I mentioned last week, um, did make it through. That's a funding for Burke. Uh, we asked for $250,000. It would is reduced to $100,000. But that $100,000 is still alive. So we're optimistic that if Burke were to receive money, that might again translate into some support for every school district planning board. So back to the community compact grant, um, and then we'll get on to the motions. Uh, this was our planned spending, um, in the various categories. Um, as of last week, I'm, I'm in the process right now of paying May bills. And then we'll have one more month before we close out the fiscal year. Um, we're doing, I think, pretty good in, in spending, um. And, um, so we're at, we've spent about half of our money, um, and I'm projecting through June, July, August, September, spending in the follow um, in each of the categories as is listed here. Um, there's an additional $10,000 we're looking for funding to support the Abrahams group that's been highly involved in the fiscal modeling, which is ongoing. And then we have marked out money for the community education outreach work, um, which will be bringing to you all tonight. I'm projecting around, um, a $7,000, um, six to $7,000 deficit, which, um, I believe will, with the town fund, will get us pretty close to totally exhausting all the funds that we currently have um, through the month of September, which hopefully will get us, um, relatively close to a town vote. So are there any questions on that? In the budget? So if not, I'll move to, um, the, um, two budget requests tonight that we will have, um, motions for and a vote on. One is community education funding, this community, um, outreach subcommittee uh, heard, uh, proposals from submitted by Stacy Schultz and two different work groups. Um, the two proposals are, I've taken screenshots of these, um, and put them on this particular screen, but they're also live links. So when I send this, I will be able to hyper hyperlink to the actual proposals. Um, assuming the board votes affirmatively tonight, the community outreach subcommittee tomorrow will be reviewing, um, these proposals with the possibility of awarding, um, assuming that you give the, the subcommittee authority to do that. So the two motions tonight, which, um, we did, um, address last week and we are readdressing tonight, our, um, authorization to, uh, for the chair of the regional school district planning board to enter into a contract for the community education support. Um, uh, for a team that will be selected by the community outreach subcommittee up to $25,000. And then the second, um, uh, motion will be to extend the contract with Abraham Groups up to $10,000, um, which I just represented in the community compact adjusted budget. So Lucy, I can turn it over to you, um, and let you manage through how you wanna um, work the motions.
Yeah, I, I have asked for, um, a motion to authorize the chair of the RSDPB and turn to a contract for community at support with a team to be selected by the community outreach subcommittee in an amount of to $25,000.
So moved.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that you, Nadine?
It is.
Thank you. Okay, discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's take a vote on that. Um, Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Abstain.
Uh, George?
Yes.
Uh, Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy? Nancy?
Yes.
Thank you. Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Have I missed anyone? Did anyone join? That weren't, wasn't in attendance at the start? No. Um, and we haven't been able to get Andy over?
No, I tried reaching out directly by email as well to check in.
Okay. Um, okay. Uh, so that motion passes and then the second motion I asked for is a motion to approve the extension of the uh, Abrams Group contract up to $10,000.
So moved.
Thank you, Nadine. Thank you, Don. Uh, any discussion? Okay, on favor, Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Same.
George?
Yes.
Uh, Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
So Lucy, moving on, I don't know if there's anything else under the project managers. We can move on to the, I believe that the deliberation around the finance subcommittee recommendation.
Okay, no update on state advocacy or funding prospects? We've already covered that.
Yeah, I mean, the only update would be that we have a, we have ongoing, uh, meetings with the Department of Education and we have one scheduled for this week. And that's primarily to be reviewing regional agreement language as we, as we craft it and as you all approve it.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, so, uh, item five, continued discussion of eight town regional school district agreement and in particular the methodologies for apportionment of operating and capital cost to the eight towns and the finance subcommittee recommendation uh, on both operating and capital assessment methodologies. So you may remember at the end of the last meeting, uh, there was a motion made by Don Colburn, seconded by Steve Bannon to adopt the recommendation of the finance committee uh, with respect to both operating and capital assessment methodologies. So I'm gonna begin by inviting uh, those two gentlemen to, uh, make the motion and second if they're so inclined.
Is that me first?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I am gonna make a motion to accept uh, the finance committee. However, in making that motion, I'm doing so because I made it the last time. But I want to alert that I want to discuss a reconsideration uh, of it, but I nonetheless make the motion.
Okay, so your motion is to accept the recommendation of the finance of committee, uh, on operating and capital assessment methodologies, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Steve?
Yes, second.
Okay. Um, so let's open that motion up for discussion.
So, may I continue with my thought?
Yes.
Okay. Um, body always has a right before a final decision to reconsider a decision. Uh, and I've thought a lot about this since our last meeting. And I'm gonna suggest that we, uh, reconsider. And let me explain why. I think there are two major issues that, uh, the success or failure of this project is gonna turn on. One of them is the so-called culture issue, which frankly, I've never been able to, uh, understand clearly what people were talking about and raised it. Because I don't think they've articulated, but it is a major issue that people talk about. The other major issue is the contribution, uh, to the uh, capital, uh, by the five southern towns. I'm not arguing in favor of the towns not being responsible for a portion of it. Uh, but the prob, there's a, a problem with the way we've structured it, namely that it requires will end up requiring two votes. First, a vote to approve the project or not, and if that is approved, a subsequent vote on the bond issue. And on that one, oddly enough, the towns, the southern towns with only a 10 or 15% contribution would have the ability to block. And so we're talking about if that occurs having a dissolution of the agreement forming the district uh, and, um, ending the project. That seems to me to be very complex and very messy. And I'm wondering if Matt, in his genius, can take us out of that by working with the safety valve. Right now, we have it at 10%, uh, 2%, 2%. And I'm wondering whether that safety valve can be adjusted so maybe two and a quarter percent, maybe two and a half percent, I don't know, to an eighth percent if it can be adjusted. So the end result is that the money obligation doesn't change substantially. But if we can do that, then we avoid this two-vote extremely clumsy and troublesome process. And so I would ask Matt whether, um, but Matt's not whether, is he?
He's here.
He's here. Whether it's possible to do that. In other words, can we accomplish through that means the same financial understanding that we've come to? If the answer is yes, then, and, and it takes us a little time to do it, then I would ask that we give back time to do it. So Matt, tell me.
Well, while we, Don, before, before we ask Matt to make additional calculations on this, on the fly, I just wanna make sure I understand the underlying assumption in your proposal by adjusting the safety valve by some percentage. I'm not, I'm not seeing how that solves the problem of needing a two-step vote in order to protect the Berkshire Hills towns from losing their place with the MSBA if, for whatever reason, uh, the debt vote goes down for an eight-town district uh, once the, the precise cost of the high school is determined. I don't see how changing the safety valve is going to avoid the need for the unwind button. So maybe you can explain how you think that's, that's gonna work.
That's a good point. I, I left out one part, which was that in the agreement, we agree that since the only towns that are paying for capital through the bond process to vote will be the three towns.
So you're, you're having the Southern Berkshire towns pay zero on the high school? That's your proposal?
Thank you.
I'm, I'm proposing that the, the Southern Berkshire towns not vote at all on the question of accepting the bond that we put in the agreement that that decision will be made by the three towns.
Even though, even though the Southern Berkshire towns are gonna be paying 10% of the cost, they don't get a vote?
Well, they won't be paying the 10% because I'm recommending that, that, that we, or I'm asking Matt if we can through the process of the safety valve by increasing its amount, treat that capital problem as an essence operating.
Okay, so, so what you're positing is that the three towns pay 100% of the cost of the high school, but the safety valve be adjusted so that the economics are effectively the same. Do I have that right?
That's exactly right. And I don't know whether we can do that. That's my question.
Okay, and that was, that was a, uh, possibility that was discussed at our last meeting. I remember Patrick saying I'd be happy with the Southern Berkshire towns paying nothing if the safety valve were, were adjusted to 3%. And I remember Nadine responding that that would be unacceptable to her. So it, it has been discussed, but I understand you want it to be discussed again.
I'm not su, because I'm not suggesting 3%. I'm accepting Nadine's premise that the 3% would, would, would have us paying too much more. My question to the board and to Matt in particular is if we have some adjustment to that, um, uh, safety valve, the lower one, maybe two and a quarter percent, maybe two and an eighth, I don't know, would that take take care of the financial obligation? That's built in right now.
Okay, I understand. Uh, Peter Dillon?
I, I just would like to ask try to retell part of what Don's saying to help clarify it. Is that okay?
Of course.
So, Don, i-if, if, uh, five towns contribution to the capital cost was 4% of the half of the project that the state's not funding, plus the 6% that the newly formed region would get from the state. Are you suggesting that the?
I gotta be on this eight-town meeting.
Are, are, are you suggesting that the 4% get translated some way into, uh, uh, higher safety valve to, to make up the difference, but not explicitly charge the five towns for any part of the high school project?
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
If it's workable.
Yeah, ma, it, it's, it's an interesting premise and it, and it, uh, it, it might be workable.
Uh, John Silver?
Yes, hi. I'm sorry, I missed most of the last meeting or the last hour. I had a select board meeting, so I just wanna, um, I just wanted to comment that I, that I support the 90-10 split through the entire term of the bond and, um, my votes are gonna reflect that. But having heard what Don was just proposing, I, I do wonder if just sticking with the 90-10 split would solve the problem rather than trying to mess with the operating. Because I think effectively, my understanding is what Don is trying to do is shift the, the total cost of the towns from capital to operating, keeping the 88, uh, the 85-15 and putting some of it back into operating. But I think it's far easier just to go for the straight 90-10 all the way through. So.
Want to that, please?
I'm sorry?
No, I was just asking Lucy to let me respond to that.
Oh, yeah, sure. So I just wanna let everybody know that, that I think the simplest solution is to just stick with the 90-10. It will shift some of the capital costs back to the three Berkshire Hills towns. But I, I agree that there's probably as much risk in the bond failing at 85-15 in several Southern Berkshire towns than it is the 90-10 failing in one of the Berkshire Hills towns. And, you know, a, again, nobody has a, a crystal ball here, but I think the best chance we have of all eight towns passing this is just to stick with the 90-10 and leave the operating the way it is.
Okay, two responses. One, uh, I made that motion, you seconded it, and we lost uh, everybody to me. So that's not on the table and I accepted that in making this motion. The other problem with the 90-10, even if everybody agreed to that, is it still leaves this terribly messy problem of a second vote after creation of a district and then having to dissolve the district. But Matt, can we hear from Matt whether there's any possibility to this? Because if I'm, I'm not good at math. If, uh, it can't be done mathematically.
Well, we can ask Matt if he's comfortable responding
Yeah, I mean, I'm just
to this on the fly. I mean, I think that's, that's a hard thing to do. Go ahead, Jake.
I just wanted to jump in and say that, you know, in 2033, we'd be talking about Southern Berkshire towns. Southern Berkshire towns be paying about two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in debt service towards a new high school. So that's at the, that's at the ten percent with the back out of the regional incentive, so two thirty-six. So you'd have to adjust the safety valve to overcome that two thirty-six out of the gate. If we do the five, the, the ship to the eighty-five fifteen in effect, the debt service for the Southern Berkshire towns goes up to four hundred thousand dollars by twenty thirty-eight. I'll play a little defense with Matt and, and just ask the question, what the how precise we can get forecasting operating budgets out that far um, to know whether a safety valve would actually account for a four hundred thousand dollar difference.
And the other thing I wanna, I just wanna flag for Matt before he responds is that our methodology for sharing costs across the eight towns differs when you're talking about operating costs and capital costs. So if the Southern Berkshire towns are not paying any part of the, uh, cost of the new high school, and it's all getting shifted to operating costs, that's using a different methodology, that's the rolling average required local contribution percentage uh, and not equalized value for those additional costs on the operating side. So the effect of that is that Sheffield among the five towns is going to be paying a higher percentage of that delta, Don, that you're shifting from capital to operating than would be the case if we kept the ten percent going to whatever it is, fifteen percent, uh, on the capital cost side. But Matt, respond, respond to Don's question.
So it's, it's definitely something that we could look at. I can't guarantee that the numbers are gonna work out as, as smoothly as, as uh, Don is suggesting they might. But we can, we can run the numbers. I'm not willing and not able to do them during this meeting. I would have to spend time on them. Make sure I'm comfortable with them before I present it to the group. Um, but if, if that is the will of this group, I'd be willing to take a look at it. It's just, I'm not sure it's gonna get done, um, or whoever else supports it exactly what they're looking for. Um, so let's just keep in mind what we're talking about here when we're talking about the safety valve. It's, um, the safety valve's in place to reallocate some excess funds for any town that is above that, um, when comparing their assessment to the prior year. So if we were to increase it, yeah, that probably does mean that, um, that some of the, some of the towns that have access in the current scenario, the two percent scenario would have less access and would, would then therefore pay a little bit higher in the assessment. So it very well could end up in the area that Don is thinking. I just don't know for sure without running the numbers. But also I think this is something that Jake was alluding to. We are projecting for multiple data points, um, out into the future that our projections are based on. Um, so if we're going to rely on that more, that does, you know, it does make me a little bit more nervous about the entire thing. But just want everyone to be aware again that those are projections. When you're talking about where we think people's assessments are gonna come up, it's based on several factors that may or may not come true. Um, the capital piece is more firm if you, if you wanna compare the two.
Can I get one other idea then?
Now, let's, let's have the rest of the discussion, Don. There are people with hands up and I'd like to hear from them. Um, John, then Nadine, then Peter Dillon.
Um, so can I just ask a, a, a technical question? Or have we written into our agreement only a capital assessment method for the new building? Or is there a generic one that takes over after the building is built?
The, the finance subcommittee's recommendation includes both.
Okay, so you know, the thing about changing the, the, uh, two and a half percent valve is that the operating budget's gonna go on forever. But the, but the new school will be paid off at some point. So I think it's way less predictable to mess with the two and a half percent than it is to mess with the initial split between Southern Berkshire and Berkshire Hills. So, um, I understand there was a vote after I left. That's fine. Everybody has to vote, you know, what they believe in. But, um, but I still submit that changing that to ninety-ten now is much less riskier than playing with the two and a half percent. Thanks.
Okay, but it's two percent, John.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Two percent.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, Nadine?
Yeah, I'm not at all in favor of what Don is proposing. I think that there is a philosophical, uh, conversation here of turning two districts into one. And I think that the finance subcommittee, no, I take that back. We did not, I do not think, I know, we discussed all of these, um, concerns about cost sharing, uh, at, at great length. And, um, I stand behind the recommendation that the finance subcommittee has made, um, fully. Um, and I do not think that it is at all appropriate to ask um, the five Southern Berkshire towns to absorb more of the operating expense for the duration of the existence of this new district.
Okay, Peter Dillon.
Um, yeah, I just, my only comment is that I think the idea is interesting, but I'm concerned about the unintended consequences of it. So we thought through the other ideas and ran it by Desi and, and looked at in a lot of different ways. And, and I don't think we've yet vetted this idea in, in a similar way. And if we were to go further with it, I hope, I hope we, we would look at all the potential implications of it.
Okay, are we, I'm sorry, uh, Steve Bannon, then Peter Taylor.
I'll keep it, uh, pretty brief. I agree with Nadine. I think that, um, the finance subcommittee's proposal makes the most sense. I think that the unintended consequences of changing the safety valve has much longer implications for the Southern Berkshire district. And in fact, I'm not sure we'll ever be one district if we do that, because it goes on forever until we change the regional agreement. So, uh, I think what we voted on last week was the best uh, solution. And I think that's, we should stick with it.
Thanks, Steve. Peter?
Yeah, I won't rehash all the points raised. Um, I do just wanna affirm Don's underlying assumption, though, that I think we do have our work cut out for us facing two votes to get this done. So I wanna just recognize Don's motivations to try to figure out a, a a potential way to combine these votes into one and um, and I'm not sure if there's other ways, if we took a step back, that we could consider that, because I do share his concerns about the second vote.
George, then Bill.
Thank you, Lucy. You know, we've heard about philosophies, we've heard about cultures, but we're really just talking about numbers. And I agree with what John Silver said and what Nadine said, that ninety-ten straight through makes it comprehensible to the people that will eventually be voting on this. The complications of what we've recently been discussing go over my head. And I'm pretty good at numbers.
Uh, Bill?
Um, thanks. You know, this question of, uh, the risk of two meetings separated. I understand why they, we've talked about them as separate meetings, because we won't know about the debt for, um, some months. Maybe we postpone the vote on the regional agreement until we have the numbers and we have one meeting that covers both, both items. The, the agreement and the, and the debt. So there's only one meeting. But obviously not till sometime next year.
Yeah, we, we did explore that possibility, Bill. And uh, the problem with that is that you're not gonna get folks to design, to spend the money to design an eight-town, uh, high school. Unless people know that the eight towns wanna merge. And, you know, we unfortunately have this chicken and egg situation, uh, which we've gotta solve. And when we talked about solving it with the ability to unwind in what I would hope would be the unlikely event that people vote for the merger, but vote down uh, the money necessary to build the building, which is really the primary value proposition of the merger. Right? Merging the two high schools on a single campus. If that happens and we don't expect it to, and we don't hope that it will, um, and it seems unlikely to me, but it could happen. And we need, we need to provide the Berkshire Hills towns with some comfort that they're not gonna lose their place in line with the MSBA, and they're gonna be able to build their new high school without the merger. And that's the reason for the unwind. Um, this board, you know, has, is coming to the end of its purpose, right? And we certainly are coming to the end of our money. We don't have money to keep going until, um, June, July, August, September of twenty twenty-four. We run out of money in September of this year. Um, so it's really time, from my perspective, to put the question to the voters of the eight towns, are you interested in this? Because if they're not interested in doing this, we should stop doing this work and stop spending money. Uh, if they are interested in it, uh, we should move forward, get the uh, high school bill for the eight towns and hope that the, the debt vote flies when that number is finally determined and put to the eight towns. So we did talk about that, Bill, and I think the, the consensus of the group was, although having two votes is not what we would dream of in the ideal world, uh, it's sort of where we are.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah. So, um, all right, uh, John and then, uh, Peter.
My hand. Let Peter go first. He was, he was next.
I'm sorry, Peter.
Yeah, Lucy, I, I, I fully concur with, uh, you know, the vast majority of your argument. I think there's, there's one point, though, I just feel should be raised, because it was pointed out to me after the last time we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, that holding up the cost of designing two high schools as a potential barrier is indeed the case. It was pointed out to me, though, that we're gonna have to fund a transition committee uh, to do its work over the same period of time, that the two design, that the two high schools potentially have to be uh, designed. So I think it's, there's a cost inherent in either scenario and um, and why I ultimately fall where you do, that we have to put this up to the voters to know if there is a proposition that the eight towns can get behind. I don't know if I would lead with your first point of your argument, because there's gonna be costs in the transition that we're gonna have to absorb before there's complete finality, that the towns are gonna fund the new high school, which is absolutely essential to this merger to be successful.
Which is why we need to, if we're gonna incur those costs for a transition committee, we need to know from the eight towns that they're interested in the merger. I think that just underscores the need for a vote this fall from the eight towns on whether they're interested in the merger. We don't know, Peter, if we've got a majority in all eight towns, or even a majority in six or seven of the towns. And we won't know that until we take the vote.
I have just a quick follow-up for clarification. Maybe Peter Dillon, I'm, I'm, I'm asking this question clearly as a Great Barrington uh, resident and, uh, father of a daughter that graduated from Monument. But given, you know, the, the, the potential that the eight towns might not ultimately support the bond issue. Peter, is there a fallback position on the three hills of the Berk, you know, that, or are we basically buying in that, that we have to assume that there's gonna be support? Or is there gonna be a backup plan for a three-town high school? If for some reason the eight-town bond fails, or it, it will indeed, you know, the three towns lose its opportunity for a new high school if that second vote goes down?
That's the reason for the unwind, to have that backup plan.
Right. So people, if it's okay, listen, people keep asking me this question, and I don't have a really good answer to this question yet. I think what would happen would be if.
Carl, can you mute yourself, please? Thanks.
I, I think what would happen is if, if we did the vote with eight towns and it failed, we quickly do the vote again with three towns. Or at the time we do the vote, a- and this is where it gets tricky, because the numbers obviously would, would be different by four percent from the five towns plus six percent from the state. But, but do we have a mechanism where the, the people in the five, in the three towns vote simultaneously for either proposition, an eight-town school or a three-town school? And if the eight-town school fails and the three-town school passes, then we go forward. So I'm not there yet and, and we have more work to, to do on.
Yeah, but the, the whole reason for the unwind is to provide that backup, Peter Taylor. That's the whole reason, so that there is a plan B for the Berkshire Hills uh, towns if the eight-town bond fails.
My point and follow-up to that, Lucy, and again, I, I agree with your, your assertions here. It's just a, it's a, it's a question again, just for clarity. But to be able to have that unwind activated and the three towns to have the information to act, to vote on a second bond issue, don't we need to go through a design process for a smaller school?
No, the idea is that we would design both the three-town and eight-town school simultaneously. That's what we've been talking to Desi about. And that's what I understand has been in discussion with the MSBA.
Right, but, but what makes this so hard is we've not yet hired, this board hasn't voted to go forward. Berkshire Hills hasn't hired an owners' project manager, though we're just about to advertise that. And we haven't hired architects to even talk about how they're gonna try to simultaneously design a school for four hundred and eighty-five and six hundred and twenty students. So what people keep asking me to do is give them a concrete answer about something that we don't have enough information to have a concrete answer on.
Understood. But that is the purpose of the unwind, is to address that very situation.
I would like to suggest another idea.
Wait a minute, Don. We've got John Silver's hand up. He's been waiting.
Many people speak without raising their hands. And it's gonna trouble me.
Okay, I'll, I'll interrupt people more then. Everyone, please raise your hand before you speak. Um, John?
So I have a question before I have a comment and, and maybe someone can help me. If, if we had not decided to split up the vote, because that's fairly recent idea, and we, we had gone to all eight towns with the entire package, but would we have gone without an actual number? I mean, don't we need an actual bond number when the towns vote on a ballot measure? We need the actual number, correct?
Which ballot measure are you talking about? The merger vote or the, the bond vote?
I guess I'm trying to distinguish between the two. So for example, if we voted to merge and we voted on a a, an assessment method, we would still have to vote on a bond that had an actual number on it, wouldn't we?
Yes, but we don't have to do it at the same time. That's the whole point of the unwind.
I understand it. So yeah, that's what I'm trying to get, get clear. But you know, all these months or years that we've been doing this, we hadn't ever considered splitting it up until now.
No, we've been talking about it for, for at least three months.
Okay, I said three years. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, you know, we, I, I, would we even have a number for the bond by this fall if we were to go for the, for the, for the vote on the whole thing? We wouldn't have?
No, that's the point.
Okay. So actually, we really, it's really not, we really have to do this in two votes. Okay. So, all right. So now my comment. I wonder if we can go ahead and vote on the methodology, even though, you know, I agree, I feel that the 90-10 is the least risky. It appears that, that's, that we're going to vote for the 85-15, but I would like to maybe, can we get that under our belts? And then if we still need to talk about the, the bond votes as a separate issue and the problems with it, can't we just keep doing that?
Yes, we can. The, the motion on the table right now is to approve the recommendation of the finance subcommittee. And we, we have prepared for those who would like to see it again before they vote, a summary of what that recommendation is. So there's no confusion about what it is the subcommittee has recommended. But absolutely, John, we have not yet voted on the unwind button. You don't have any language in front of you on the unwind button. That's for another day.
Okay.
All right. So we can continue this discussion about the unwind at our next meeting. But the, the motion on the table now is just the motion to approve the recommendation of the finance subcommittee.
Okay. So can I ask you as chair, just to keep us focused on that motion until we get through it?
I'm doing my best.
I know you are.
Thank you. Steve Bannon.
Like John, and we often agree, I'd like to really focus on the motion. Unless there's an amendment to the motion, throwing out random ideas isn't helping us at all. It's just taking us farther and farther down the rabbit hole. And it would be nice if we voted on this motion or made an official amendment to it so that we could move along in the process. And to discuss the building vote really makes this really confusing. And I, and I think it's, there's a lot, it's much more complicated than it's been laid out. And I think we need to just focus on this vote right now.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the motion that is?
My hand is still up, Lucy.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it. I don't see your hand up, but go ahead.
It's been up all along. Okay, I, I'm going to make a motion to amend the motion. I think we should consider this concept, a temporary capital adjustment factor. And what we should do is provide that the capital contributions, that instead of the cap contributing to the capital, that the five towns make temporary capital adjustments to their operating expenses. And thereby leave the decision on the, on the, on the school and the bonding of the school to the three towns. And thereby avoid this double voting danger of dissolving the project. That's my motion.
Is there a second to the motion? Okay, no second to the motion, Don. So we're back to your initial motion, which was to approve the recommendation of the finance subcommittee. So I don't see any more. Oh, Nadine?
I'm just wondering if we can move on to the presentation.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Why don't we do that?
Before we vote, let's look at the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
But we still have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, and this is part of the discussion of that motion. Go ahead, Jake.
You, you do want to do that?
Yeah, Nadine has asked that we do that.
All right. So at the request of the chair, we prepared a few slides that just provide a summary of the operating and the capital methodologies, just to refresh everyone's memory before they voted to ensure that everyone understood what they were voting on. The full presentation, as you all remember, is available from April 11. I put hyperlinks in here and there's a video recording that that you're welcome to watch. So the finance subcommittee focused on two tasks. One was developing operational, operating expense methodologies, and the other was focused on capital expense methodologies. I want to reinforce because it's asked quite often. Does capital include existing debt? Does capital include future debt? And the answer to that is yes. Capital includes costs associated with a new high school, costs associated with existing capital debt, and projected costs associated with future debt. So let's start with operating methodology. The operating methodology, as I had mentioned at the last meeting, this is the same slide I shared with you all in the April 11 presentation, has two basic parts and then has a safety valve slash cap assigned, which acts as a smoothing mechanism. Part A is required and in both our regional agreements currently as the allocation according to the Department of Ed's statutory calculation, which results in required local contributions by each town towards the district's budget. Most districts spend more than the required. And so you have this amount of money above the required that then has to get apportioned, and that's part B. The above required will be apportioned by using a five-year rolling average of the minimum contributions of each of the towns, which will be converted to what we're referring to as an applicable percentage. So that applicable percentage is what town, what percent each town will contribute, will pay for as a portion of the above required spending. That percentage is then multiplied by the total amount of money that the budget is above required, and then each town has assessed that amount. The safety valve then gets put into place and it serves, we, we've established a 2% safety valve has been discussed tonight and in previous meetings. That gets added to the, basically the change in operating assessments from the prior fiscal year to the current fiscal year and ensures that no town will go above that in terms of their assessments. So if a town's assessment were to rise beyond that, the amount that they would have expected to pay beyond that cap would then get redistributed to the other towns which are below the cap. So it plays out, I think I shared this visual at the last meeting, something like this. This is actually, these are actual projections done by Matt. And the red would be projected fiscal year 26 budgets as compared to fiscal year 25. What you can see is that there were pretty dramatic increases as a percentage before the safety valve were applied, which are the red bars. And then a cap was established. The cap projected a 1.2 increase in total operating assessments plus a 2% safety valve for a total of 3.2% total cap. And so no town could be assessed beyond that. And so all these towns that are above the 3.2%, that amount gets reapportioned to the towns that are below. And you end up with the after-safety valve, which are the, the green bars, and everyone is at 3.2% or below. So it's a smoothing mechanism to assure that no town has dramatic spikes. In terms of real numbers, again, this is in the slideshow. This is how it plays out. This is before safety valve, what the assessments would be and how they, how they would have changed without a safety valve. And then these are the assessments applied after the safety valve with a total apportionment that is below the cap of 3.2%. So that in effect is the operating methodology. The capital methodology, three buckets. One is current existing debt. The second is the new high school and the third is future debt. So we'll start with the legacy debt, which is fairly simple. Southern Berkshire and the recommendations from the finance subcommittee will continue to make payments on their current capital debt, which extends through 2032. I provided the debt schedule as a slide in the April 11 show, but it's around $300,000 a year. It's a little bit more than that now. It'll be less than that by the time they close out the bond. So they'll continue to carry that forward. The second methodology is the cost of the new high school. The cost of the new high school will be apportioned 90% to the Berkshire Hills towns and 10% to the Southern Berkshire towns with an incremental shift that begins in 2033 and gets us pretty close to 85-15 by 2038. I'll show you why. When I say pretty close, it's within a percentage points, but I'll show you then in the illustration on the next slide. In addition to that, it's important that we were sort of building the regional agreement language. So converting from the model to the language that everyone understands that the Berkshire Hills town would be credited with what's referred to as base aid, which is the biggest block of aid provided by the MSBA. And the Southern Berkshire towns will be credited with the regional incentive aid, which is that 6% we've been talking about. We did want to make sure that people were aware that there is a possibility, I think Peter Dillon mentioned this prior meetings of additional aid being received. There's a project manager at risk or there's a green lead school certifications that I think can lead to additional percent incentives. We want to make sure that if there are any additional incentives that the MSB provides, that will go to the total cost of the project at the very beginning and sort of drive the entire cost down. And then the final thing, just to reinforce, is that the apportionment to the towns is calculated using equalized valuation EQV. The slide looks something like this, and we did make a slight adjustment in it because we want to make sure that folks understood that, you know, we were, we were doing a little rounding and, and that was really to illustrate the model. The actuals are now in here. But, you know, in effect, we're starting with this $100 million high school doing 90-10. We're applying the base aid on the Berkshire Hill side, the regional incentive on the Southern Berkshire side brings it down to 41.48 in 4 million, which is actually a 91.2% 8.8% split, which works out to this debt service. And then we do that 1% shift that get us very close to the 85-15. It's actually 85.214.8, which would result in debt service of 2.3 million on the, to the Berkshire Hills towns and about $400,000 to the Southern Berkshire towns. That's the high school. Then finally, the future debt on the town-owned buildings, which are basically New Marlboro and South Egremont, we do a reverse of the 90-10, 85-15, in which 90% of the costs go to the Southern Berkshire towns, 10% to the Berkshire Hills towns with a shift 1% annually that gets us close to the 85-15. Then all other capital debt which occurs will be apportioned using EQV. And that is very in, in, in quick order, a review of the operating and capital assessment methodologies.
Okay. Thank you. Marie, I see you were able to join. Before we take a vote on the motion, would you like to?
You don't have to do the letter, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want to speak to what was in your letter?
No, well, I mean, it's pretty much just the same as I said at the last meeting that the finance committee worked really hard and we came up over the years balancing a lot of different scenarios. And we did the best we could to make it the most fair to all the towns to become one district so the kids can have a lot of opportunities. So I really hope that you guys trust that you, the trust that you gave us to work on this as a subcommittee to realize that really we did the best we could. And I'm, I just hope that once again, that you vote for it. And that's really all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. Bonnie?
Thank you. I really, having requested this, really appreciate this summary that was put forward for us this evening. It, it makes it quite clear all the work that went into it and it's, I appreciate it. I'm sure others do as well. That's all.
Thanks, Bonnie. Hi, Don.
I have a motion to amend the pending motion. I'd like to move that the legacy debt of the five, of the five towns be treated the same as the rest of the capital, namely with the 90-10 and 85-15.
What do you mean treated the same as the 95, 90-10 and 85-15?
Instead of the legacy debt staying with the five towns, that that legacy debt be paid off with the 90-10 and the 85-515 process that we have for the rest of the capital debt.
Who, who pays the 90%?
The three towns.
So the Berkshire Hills towns have to pay 90% of the legacy debt of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District?
Yeah. They're going to get the benefit of, of that school building as being part of the district.
Is there a second? Okay, no second. George, then Steve.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to call the question.
Okay.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George. All right, the question has been called. So we're voting whether to approve the recommendation of the finance subcommittee on operating and capital assessment methodologies. Charlie?
Yes.
Carl? Carl? We'll come back to Carl.
Charlie doesn't know, he's been muted.
Carl, you're muted. Can you hear us? Jim?
I don't know. abstain for now.
Okay, I'm, I'm unmuted and I now, and I vote yes.
Thank you, Carl. George?
No.
See, Dan?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John?
No.
Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Abstain. I'm confused a little bit still.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Is there anyone else? I didn't call?
I'm a no.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, the motion passes. All right, so it's six. All right, um so it's six forty-three um. I had on the agenda contingencies. We started talking about that earlier this evening. Um. I would suggest unless there's an objection from members of the board that we. Table further discussion on that until our next meeting. When we'll have some language, we'll have more input from Desi. Peter Dillon may have more input and it would be a better informed discussion. Okay, don't see any objection to that. So we will table further discussion on the contingencies. Until the next meeting. I also have on the agenda identification of any remaining provisions in the agreement for discussion. Uh one piece of the regional agreement that we uh had sort of tabled until we had. More discussion was the date. Um. That we would use in section three B one. For um students getting grandfathered. Into the schools that are not in closest proximity. To where they reside and we had initially penciled in June twenty twenty-four. Peter Dillon wanted to think more about that. I don't know, Peter, if you have anything. More to add on that date at this point or whether you want to table that discussion as well. Until the next meeting to to think more about what that date should be.
I I'd love to table it. I I've been thinking about lots of things, but not that, so.
Okay. Uh Beth, do you have any more thoughts on what that date might be?
I'd like to table it as well.
Okay. So let's um. Let's plan on taking it up again at our next meeting if if the superintendents could give it a little bit of thought. That would be really helpful and um we'll think more about it as well. All right, uh so subcommittee updates um. Community outreach. What do we have to report, Jake, that? Uh we haven't already reported on. I mean, the major development was. That we received proposals in response to the request for quotes. We talked about that a little bit at our last meeting. Um we haven't, the community outreach subcommittee has not yet uh made a selection. On um. The consultants that we're going to engage and the precise scope of the work that we're going to engage them. To perform. We do have a community outreach subcommittee scheduled for Thursday. And there'll be more discussion of that then. Um. There's also been a request by the community outreach. Subcommittee of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee. That um. Some one or more of us attend. Uh another community conversation that is scheduled or will be scheduled. Or is hoped to be scheduled uh towards the end of June. Uh in Sheffield and we'll be taking up that request at our community outreach subcommittee meeting on Thursday. Jake, what else do we have from community outreach?
Uh no, that's about it. I mean, we're going to talk about um there's a discussion about sort of reorganizing the website post vote for. You know, trying to continue to work on, you know, clarity of message and landing space.
Okay.
Um and then trying to respond, um not trying, we are responding to everyone, but I know there's at least one person on this call that I owe. A response to on some questions that were raised. So we're trying to continue to stay on top of. Uh frequently asked questions and questions that have been asked. I will try to work on updating the um. Finance section of FAQ is now that we've approved the methodology.
Right. Okay, Bonnie, do you want to speak on community outreach?
Uh. No, it's it was um a question that I had.
Okay, can it hold until we're through the subcommittee update? Okay, and then I'll come back to you. Okay, uh Deb? You want to report on where you are with ed quality?
Um we are still working on a document to support the regional school district agreement. That outlines the, what we agree are the potential benefits that can come from a merger. With a column that also talks about the areas that we have identified that will need attention as we move forward to make sure that we do it well. Um we are meeting again on June. Fourteenth, I believe it is. To hopefully finish up that list and have something that we can present to this board. Um at an upcoming meeting. If anyone else on the committee thinks I've missed anything, but that's really where we're at. Thanks.
Is it the fourteenth? Uh Jake?
The fourteenth at five thirty.
Okay, the fourteenth at five thirty, open meeting, obviously. So if you're interested in um. Listening in and participating, please do. Um and finance subcommittee update. I'm not sure, Nadine, you've got anything more to report?
I have nothing more to report. I just very much would like to thank the board for the support of the work of the finance subcommittee. Uh it's been a lot of work, a lot of compromise made uh for benefit of the kids and I just appreciate the affirmative vote.
Okay, Bonnie?
Okay, thank you. Uh two things, one, a comment. Um Amanda's been doing an incredible job with the minutes, but. Getting all the minutes yesterday and today. Um really made it tight. And and I would hope, do we have to follow that you need to send it at least forty-eight hours in advance rule? Um.
I'm not aware of any such rule, but um the April eleventh minutes, of course, were circulated. A week and a half ago. Um and so the the May third minutes were circulated yesterday and the May thirtieth minutes we didn't vote on today. So yes, we we try and get them done, Bonnie, as quickly as we can, but oh, you know, that we had. The May, May thirty meeting a week ago, so it's hard to get those done quickly. And uh we had the vacation weekend uh and some other issue and other.
That that's.
Circumstances that got in the way of getting the May third minutes circulated earlier, but I take your point and we do our best. You know, to get them done as quickly as we can.
As long as she figures out who Bonnie Smith was that made a motion. Um to accept the minutes. And the other is, I might have missed it. But have we figured out where the hundreds of thousands of dollars for the transition period is going to come from?
Yeah, well, I think that was part of Jake's report. We're hoping we're going to get funding for that from the state. Jake, do you want to speak more to that?
Yeah, I know. I I mean, I think, as I mentioned earlier, um we did, we were able to. Get the support of Senator Merk to put that amendment into the Senate. Budget, which didn't make it through, but um may potentially have a chance in a supplemental. Um budget, which which would occur likely in the fall. Um clearly, if we get a positive vote. Um by A, the board and by B, the towns, um we've got a strong case to be made um. For um Desi and state funding. Um so we'll continue, I think, assuming the board um votes to move this forward. Um in the next month um to really work closely with the legislators and Desi um to. Signal that we're moving in a direction. So that if and when um the towns were to vote affirmatively, um we could secure those funds to support the transition work. I think we all understand, Bonnie, that without that. Um we can't get work done.
Yeah, I, well, I know that. I just wanted to know if you had thought that the two existing school districts were going to be paying for this. You you're hoping to get Desi funding. And my last point is that that summary deck that you did tonight, will that be available online for us?
Yeah, I post, I post, yeah, I post everything and um.
Okay, great.
You know, I know it gets a little tricky to find things, so. What I've started to do is put the presentations on the meetings page. So it'll say agenda and then minutes and then I'll have presentation.
Great.
If you remember when the meeting presentation was you wanted to see, just go to that meeting, click on presentation, it'll be right there. I'll post it. Um give me twenty minutes after this meeting and I'll get it up, okay?
Even have an hour and twenty. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um timing and planning for meetings in June and July. Obviously, we need. At least one more meeting. I think we're probably going to need two more meetings. Um. Before there's a vote on the recommendation, if there is one, to merge and the final version of the regional agreement. Um. Amanda, do we have responses from everyone to the doodle poll that was sent out for another meeting in June? How are we doing?
We have some, but there are quite a few have not filled out the doodle poll. So if you could, please, that'd be very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, these these last two meetings are obviously very important and. We want as much participation by members of this board as we possibly can have. So please be generous with your time. Please fill out the doodle poll. And please make every effort to attend the the meeting that is act. Eventually selected and I think we're going to send out another doodle, uh Amanda, for um early July. So that we can get those two meetings scheduled. Um. In everyone's calendars. So Jake, have I covered everything we need to cover tonight before I open up for public comments?
I think we're good. You know, we talked about sort of projecting forward, but I think you've mapped out where we're heading next and that's all that.
Do you want to put that last slide up that just sort of shows next steps? Jake is very. Um politely prompting me that I forgot a slide.
No, no, it's okay. I didn't know for sure going to do this, but I just wanted people to have a a really, really broad idea of where we're headed. Um and so what we're going to be working on is completing the regional agreement language. As Lucy pointed out, we have a few remaining items to address, which I hope will be addressed at our next meeting. And then we have to continue to work with Desi to review the regional agreement language. And so that's the vetting process, which has been ongoing and um so as we convert. The uh uh the finance apportionment. Capital operating methodologies to regional agreement language, that stuff that Desi has to review and okay. And then you all will be voting on the entire regional agreement. Um if that vote is affirmative. Then we will send the regional agreement and a summary report to the towns. Um and then we will obviously begin, we 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 are planning. We will be planning immediately for community outreach education around. Um the board's decision, which would need to occur in the months leading up to. A town meeting and then the special town meetings and town vote on the regional agreement would occur. In the fall of twenty twenty-three, we're thinking probably um early October, late September. Um and then if the town meetings are affirmative, then it's got to go to the commissioner for a final review. One of the reasons that we vet it with Desi along the way is so that when we get to the commissioner review. It's to some degree a rubber stamp at that point because his staff has already been, his staff and legal have already reviewed all the elements of it. It gets approved and then the transition committee is appointed, I should say. So that's um kind of a thumbnail snail sketch of of the next steps and the ifs um looking ahead.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right, um public comments. Any public comments? Seeing none. I will probably for the first time in the three and a half history of this board. Take, accept a motion to adjourn a full thirty minutes before the scheduled end of our meeting tonight.
So.
Okay.
Bonnie, you owe me a beer.
I'll meet you at the Frog.
Okay.
This, this is what happens when we have dress rehearsals for meetings the week before. So um thank you, everyone. Thank you for your patience. I again apologize for the Zoom glitch last week and. Onward. Yeah, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.